I wasn't following all of you. The first order should be to vote on the amendment.
When we get there, I haven't gotten there yet, sir.
Vote on the amendment to a motion before you vote on the primary motion.
You can't vote on an amendment until you have a motion.
I thought you said we already had a motion.
No, we didn't. We had a recommendation of concurrence that came out of committee.
Well, if there wasn't a previous motion, as you said, then Duckham made the motion.
Sir, now we have a motion. You can wait and I will get us to the $10,000 amendment. If you'd give me a little patience. Now, Commissioner Duckham, you'd like to amend the $50,000 to $10,000, correct?
Yes.
And you have support from Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
So what we have is we have a motion for 50,000 that's been amended to 10,000. We'll be voting on the motion for $10,000 first. If you vote that down, we will then go back and vote on the $50,000. So everyone agreed? That's where we're at. Now, what are we voting on, sir?
Amendment.
$10,000, sir. If you vote yes on this, you're voting for $10,000. Okay.
And this is the amendment by Duckham and.
Kennedy, correct.
Yes, I have that correct then. Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Commissioner Duckham. You also said the additional $40,000 would go to the sheriff's budget. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Trying to put more road patrol on at night.
Thank you.
So you want it to go just to a road patrol deputy?
It's not enough to hire one yet. Would have to add.
You just said so. You said you want it half time.
It would be half time and my wish would be to fulfill the other half of the funding. But the sheriff needs help at night. This would go a long ways towards that.
Can I read the motion?
What's that?
Can I read the motion?
Yes, you may.
Commissioner Duckham, if I do not have this correct, please correct me. Authorize the participation in the chamber's 10-year strategic plan at a cost not to exceed $10,000 and the necessary budget adjustments with the additional $40,000 to go to road patrol. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ready for a roll call?
Please.
Commissioner Poleski.
No.
Commissioner Willis.
No.
Commissioner Williams.
No.
Commissioner Snell.
No.
Commissioner Baer.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham.
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell.
No.
Fails.
Thank you. Now we're on to the $50,000. We already have that. We already have that all done, sir.
Willis and Williams have that.
Correct. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, you can call the roll.
Discussion on the primary motion?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. This issue for me is who's the more appropriate organization to represent all the citizens of Jackson County? The Board of Commissioners is voted by the citizens and it's our obligation to represent all of the citizens. I don't have anything against larger businesses and corporations. They're very necessary in our community. A lot of our citizens work for them. But to me, it comes down to who should be planning the next 20 years. And I don't, my personal, I don't believe it should be the organizations that represent larger businesses. We need those businesses, but they shouldn't control our plan for the next 20 years. So I believe that the Board of Commissioners is the more appropriate organization to represent all of our citizens. And so I will not be voting support this motion.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, I won't be in support of this either. I'm sure it'll be a great activity that's going to go on regardless whether we put $50,000 in or not. That was stated in the committee meeting. I feel there are so many things going on where we've found a shortage of funds. Commissioner Duckham pointed out, one, we all know our roads in this county are not in great shape and yeah, $50,000 isn't going to do a lot. But before we put money towards, I would say, added caveats, I think we need to take care of the basics in this county. So I think the $50,000 could be spent better elsewhere. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I clearly remember just a few months back, we were digging and scraping and doing anything we could to get the sheriff department more money. And now we're just nonchalantly giving somebody $40,000 so we can have somebody come in and teach us what we think. I already know what I think. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I stand in support of the motion as this is, in my opinion, a much needed work. Whereas I don't believe that this such committee or work is teaching us how to think or teaching us those types of things, but it's more of a matter of us putting together collective thought and mind to continue to prepare and create a stronger Jackson County for the future. So, Mr. Chair, again, I stand in support of the motion.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Willis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think those who fail to plan, plan to fail. This is an opportunity for us to get with the Chamber of Commerce. They're working with the group whose focus is collaboration, innovation, specializing in comprehensive planning and strategic visioning. They're going out into the community to bring back to us the things that the community would like to see so we'll know how to better plan. Our last strategic plan for the county cost us $60,000. For contributing $50,000 to this organization, we get the benefit of the studies and the results that they'll bring and included in that $50,000 is a strategic plan for the county. So, Mr. Chair, I'm in support of this motion. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baer?
No.
Commissioner Walls?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
As a Republican, no.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckham? Returning to you.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Earl Poleski. Commissioner Poleski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It is the appointment of a member, a general public member for the Lifeways Board. The sitting member is Christine Carlson. This is for a new term expiring March of 2028. We had a number of excellent applicants, including Christine Carlson, Carly Starnes, Pete Benke, Ella Hefseba, Amy Rogers, Gene Dobbins Miller, Karen Wooten, and Marilyn Acton. The committee recommendation is to reappoint Christine Carlson. That is the motion from the committee.
Any nominations from the floor?
Nominate Karen Wooten.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, you can call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Williams?
Carlson.
Commissioner Snell?
Carlson.
Commissioner Baer? Commissioner Walls?
Carlson.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Wooten.
Commissioner Duckham?
Wooten.
Commissioner Poleski?
Carlson.
Commissioner Willis?
Carlson.
Chairman Chatwell?
Carlson.
Carlson passes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes?
Excuse me. Commissioner Poleski, I apologize.
Earl, you led that slide.
I didn't do it.
I don't know quite how to feel about that, Mr. Chair.
I've called you other names and we're all good.
And will again. Mr. Chair, I would simply remind the public that we do have need of a primary consumer member on the Lifeways Board, although we do not yet have applicants for that. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We've arrived at unfinished business. We have none at this time. We've arrived at new business. I meant new business, dear. It's not there yet. That's okay. New business.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, in light of recent litigation surrounding ICE detainers judgments, including a $60 million federal judgment against Suffolk County, New York, for detaining individuals beyond their lawful release time based on ICE detainers, I'm recommending that, I want to make a motion to move the county administrator to have the agreement with ICE reviewed illegally, get that opinion and bring that back to the commission to make sure that it ensures constitutional compliance, does not violate Fourth Amendment constitutional privileges, and avoids fiscal liability for the county.
We have a motion in support. The chair's prerogative is to move that for administrative review and return in 30 days with it? Okay? We're moving it to the Administrator Controller's Office for his review to return with an answer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Waste of money.
What's that? Yeah, there were three nays, correct? So I think we're going to have to do a roll call.
You're having a motion to vote with no discussion?
Sir, it's an administrative motion. Yes, there's no discussion. Taking advice of, taking the chair's prerogative to send it to the Administrator Controller's Office so that way we can have a legitimate discussion next month after he's reviewed it and returned with a recommendation, just like he does with all items. Okay?
Okay, I have a question then. If that's what the motion is, I don't have an issue with it. If there's attorney fees involved in it, I have an issue with it.
There's going to be attorney fees. There's always attorney fees.
Then I know where I'm at. Thank you.
Commissioner Baer?
I doubt this is a thought that came to mind just tonight. We have an agenda. It would be nice if someone's going to bring something to the board under new business that they go through the proper process, have their motion.
That's what we're doing right now, sir. When an item appears at the night of the meeting, you send it to the Administrator Controller's Office for review and then you bring it back to the board in 30 to 60 days with a response. So that's what we're doing right now.
I just remember when I have brought up something that I had not submitted to everyone ahead of time, I got accused by a bunch of people of ambushing them because I didn't give them time to look at it ahead of time. So we've just been ambushed again.
All in favor again?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Snell? Commissioner Baer?
No.
Commissioner Walls?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
No.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
I guess, no. Chairman Chatwell?
Chairman Chatwell's a no. Entertained a motion to reconsider the administrative rule. Any support?
I'll move it. I'll support.
We have a motion in support to reconsider. We're going to, it's going to come back again. I'm going to ask the clerk to recall, call the roll again. Yes, Commissioner Duckham?
I clearly heard everybody's name called. Why would we want to reconsider this?
What's that?
I clearly.
Because I was on the side of the majority and as a member of the majority, I choose to have it reconsidered. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes.
Now, this is on the motion to reconsider?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Everyone clear?
This is the motion to reconsider.
Commissioner Baer?
Yes.
Commissioner Walls?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
No.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
No.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Five ayes. Motion passes.
Point of order. Commissioner Baer, did you know what you were voting on here?
Now, hold on, Commissioner Kennedy. We're going to now vote on the motion again.
Okay.
Okay?
As I understood, this was a motion to reconsider the previous vote.
Correct. That's what we're going to do right now.
And since the previous vote didn't go the way I liked, sure, I want to reconsider it. I want to vote on it a second time. Vote no on it a second time. Did I misunderstand the, did I misunderstand the clerk?
This is on the original motion.
We're going to, we're voting on the original motion to send it to the Administrator Controller's Office for review.
Okay, then they deceived me.
Okay.
You're going to have to vote again.
Commissioner Walls?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
No.
Commissioner Duckham?
No.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
No.
Commissioner Baer?
No.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Motion was defeated.
Yes.
We've arrived at public comment. Public comment guidelines. Each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time.
My name is Natalie Schroder. My husband and I came tonight. He grew up here in Jackson area. I can't believe that this many people came out about this issue and you're not even willing to get advice. I have no words, so I'm just looking at you. Either you don't understand what the potential is here or you don't care or both. I don't know. This is miserable. The vast majority of people in this area are very upset. These are our neighbors. These are the people that go to school with my kids and you're content with them being sent away without rule of law, without a chance to defend themselves and you're sitting over there smiling. Cute.
My name's James Minnick from Columbia Township. When you commit a crime, you forfeit your rights. I know this personally. My first crime was retail fraud as a 10-year-old. I stole a candy bar. Point of order. I stole a candy bar and for, I think it was a quarter back then, I ended up doing six months on juvenile detention. Screw you and your society that's so weak that you think you're going to take my money and pay for somebody else to protect somebody else when you can't protect me, your own child who was born at the hospital down the road, who went through hell from the moment he was 10 years old, became institutionalized his whole life to where now as an adult with a college education and the whole world in the palm of his hand is frozen with fear because I don't like society and I don't fit in and I never will. Where is your bleeding heart crying for me when I was a child, when I was just a, I'm still innocent, by the way. What you guys did to me is unforgivable.
Hello, good people. I.
Your first name, please, your name?
I'm sorry. Jamie Naturalate and I am in one of those guys' ward. I think it's Darius' ward. I myself have not made up a mind about the immigration thing. I try to deal with facts. I did 38 years in prison, so I've only been out just a few days over a year on parole. And I would, I eagerly like to look forward to a conversation with our sheriff, Gary Shute, to see, to get his feedback because I know from my personal experience with him, he's a very good, compassionate, professional law enforcement person that I highly respect. So, and I'm sorry, late, I was at a Toastmasters meeting. So, but I understand, you know, where there could be public outrage, but usually where this public outrage is due to lack of information and transparency and stuff like that and either communicating why a certain action was taken and then messaging that. So I think that it's just like when white people hate black people or black people hate white people. It's not because they have the facts about that individual. It's just a judging book by its cover and I don't think that is wise for anybody to do. I think we should read the book and go by the facts. And I apologize, Mr. Chatwell, because last year's time I was here, I was living in your district and I was, I'm a little bit irrational, but that was, I was only out like six or seven months.
15 seconds.
I hear you. I'm watching the clock right here, too. But anyways, and I love Tony Blair. He's my hero and I love my two brothers over here, too, and everybody else, too. Earl Poleski, too. So, but anyways, thanks.
Gaila Ignatius again. I didn't know we could speak twice. I agree with the other lady who is up here. The fact that you guys wouldn't even consider taking some time to explore this is appalling to me. It's shocking and the way you're just sitting there and the way you are smirking, it's really disappointing that we have elected officials in this community who won't take the time to even explore this. I spent 40 minutes with Sheriff Shute yesterday and I want to say I appreciate that very much. He was kind. He explained a lot of things. He was articulate. But after exploring the stuff that he sent me, I still am not comfortable with this agreement. I have been a foster mom to the undocumented refugees that have come. We have Samaritan's House in this community. I have boys who drop in who are terrified they're going to get picked up. In 2022, 2022, we gained as a nation almost $100 billion from undocumented tax and social security payments that they won't be able to claim on. They're entrepreneurs. They bring diversity, a lot of goodness to our community. We've got great people here. I've been immersed in the immigrant culture here. They're not criminals and the sheriff's department has a way to take care of people who do commit crimes. And just because I have a heart and a love for all kinds of people doesn't mean I have less of a heart and love for someone else who suffered. It doesn't take away my empathy and caring. Thank you. So just your narrow-mindedness and shortsightedness is just dumbfounding to me, especially on this side of the room. I'm really disappointed and I will keep track. I'll try and make my vote count.
Sue McCollis, Summit Township, Precinct 3. I had no plan to comment tonight, but I just wanted to thank the commissioners for being here tonight to listen to us because that's your role when we come up here to make public comment. It is to listen. It is not to respond to us and get into a conversation with us as we stand here. So thank you for your attention. Thank you for listening.
Hello. Madeline Carr, Columbia Township. I just wanted to voice that I also wasn't intending on saying anything, so maybe I won't be eloquent, but earlier I had to write a quote down from Philip saying, "I already know what I think." And when I was coming here tonight, I already thought that coming here to try and voice dissent against ICE playing a role in this community was useless because I thought what would happen is that people would come up and they would plan and say something emotional and well-thought-out and that there would be these like glazed looks on faces. And then that was what I saw. So you, I guess, like Philip, I already know what I think. It's that you didn't care. You did not care. You weren't going to change your minds. And some of you maybe were and like I really appreciate those of you who did. But I just, it is like even though I already didn't think it was going to do anything, it was really disappointing to see it happen like in real time and also to watch like the bickering ahead of time about whether or not to vote on something and everything. Like I'm glad that that was what you wanted to spend your good taxpayer dollars on. So that was sarcasm for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Moritz. I live in Leonie Township. I'm here for two reasons. First of all, to voice my opposition to any agreement with ICE, to take in people in the county on which I live. And secondly, to applaud Commissioner Willis for proposing that you gather information to make a decision that may cost this county hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars, possibly. I hear Commissioner Duckham and Commissioner Kennedy moaning about the lack of funds in the county. And quite honestly, this could cost all of you and all of us a lot of money. And the fact that you won't even get it looked at by a lawyer seems idiotic. So again, thank you, Commissioner Willis, for trying. And again, I oppose any involvement with ICE, especially for all the reasons that were mentioned here tonight, but also because we don't know what's happening with a lot of these arrests. And again, it could cost people their lives and the county taxpayers hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars in lawsuits. Thanks.
I'm Sage Stratton in Jackson County. I just also wanted to express my disappointment. I believe that Willis also stated that the motion would go over financial, so I don't understand why that would be something that you're concerned with. I also feel distressed, but not surprised. And I'm not surprised by what I saw today, the bickering, the arguing, the disorganization and the lack of care. Thank you.
Hello again. I also didn't know we could speak twice.
Your first name, name, please?
Yes, my first name is Bethany, middle name Hersha, last name Nikoal, for the record. I'd like to follow up. I'd like to follow up on what the gentleman from Leoni brought up about costs associated with the 287G program. I think a review would show that the portion of those costs that is handled by the state and locality includes that of personnel. And counties that have entered these agreements have often left because of the drain on resources in the millions of dollars in states like West Virginia, Wisconsin, New Mexico, and others. And at least in the case of Prince William County in West Virginia, the county did have to raise taxes and dip into a rainy day fund to continue to fund the 287G program they had in place. So just wanted to emphasize the point by the gentleman from Leoni. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Galena Ryder Thompson, and I live in Leoni Township now. I moved to Michigan in 1974 when it was a sweet little all-American town that just rapidly went downhill and continues. I lived here 30 years, raised my family, and then I moved out west for 20 years and worked and enjoyed that immensely. I miss the mountains. And I came back here because all five of my grandchildren live in Jackson County. We will not be safer interacting with ICE. We've all seen the news. That's not an organization you want to be aligned with. You could at least discuss it. You could at least get information. There are people whose children are dying from measles because they know what they think. That's not a good reason to rule, to govern. Govern is different than ruling. I was not prepared to speak, so more emotions than facts. I hope you'll reconsider. We will not be safer. My grandchildren will not be safer.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Yeah. We have to be careful who we associate with. It's not a good choice. Thanks for your time.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comment? Commissioner Duckham?
I would like to very wholeheartedly thank the sheriff for recognizing his duty to help enforce our ICE movement. This isn't, you're not chasing people around. You're simply holding them for ICE till they can get here to retrieve them. And remember, every one of these people ICE is after is here illegally, illegal. That's breaking the law, okay? And we don't want the sheriff to enforce the law because we got this warm little heart and said, "Well, it'll be made to him." Now he's doing his job. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a unique outlook on this because I know I'm the only commissioner up here, but I'm probably one of the only people in this room that went through the immigration process with USCIS. I brought my wife and stepdaughter from Jamaica, went through it. It's long, it's cumbersome, it's repetitive, forms you have to do, and it's expensive. It's very frustrating to people like myself and other people that have chosen the legal path to watch people take the shortcut, jump the border, overstay visas, misuse the type of visas that are given out. There's visitor visas, and I see you shaking your hand, ma'am. But I guarantee you, I know more about USCIS law than you because I went through it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. But regardless of that, what the sheriff has proposed is these are individuals that committed a crime in Jackson County that resulted in their incarceration. They run a background check. They find out they're here illegally. They call, they notify the federal legal authorities. That's the proper thing to do. That's the responsible thing to do. And anybody claiming all this other stuff is deflection. It's not what's actually happening. And I hope the sheriff would speak out to this because I read his briefing to us, and I'm in 100% support of it. He's not going around hunting people in their homes. He's not going around hunting legal immigrants. These are people that committed a crime, get arrested, and they are also here illegally. So they've actually committed two crimes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham, then Commissioner Walls. Bear, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I am in total support of our sheriff. He's not going around looking for people that aren't already causing trouble. If they get pulled over for committing a crime and then they find additional crimes that they have committed, they get arrested. Nobody's seeking anybody out to incarcerate them. The federal officials, ICE, Trump, they're not trying to find peaceful people living in our communities. They're trying to find the vicious, violent criminals. And now where all the sympathy comes from when you have gang members that brutally gang rape young girls and then murder them? They belong in, they belong executed, in my opinion. And if all we can do is throw them out of this country, good. I'm glad ICE is doing that. Anybody that came through, as Commissioner Kennedy had mentioned, anybody that came to this country not through the legal process, they are criminals. They committed a crime coming here. They committed a crime the way they crossed the border. So they fit my definition of a criminal. Law enforcement should round up the criminals and deal with them appropriately. There are so many brutal murders and rapes committed by gang members, so much crime. Cities have almost been taken over. Apartment complexes have been taken over. ICE needs to go after those bad actors and get them out of our country. So I'm in total support of ICE rounding up the criminals. They're not going down the street looking for people. They're just minding their own business, raising their family. That's not who they're looking for. The sheriff doesn't look for them. So I hope the sheriff, I hope ICE continues to hunt down the vicious people that have come here. Don't laugh at me. I'll laugh at you. I'm in total support of them. I'm glad our sheriff is working with them. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Walls?
Thank you, Chairman Chatwell. I just wanted to make this moment to thank, sorry, to thank all of the members of this board because I know each and one of you, each and every one of you do your best to represent the people in your communities. And as we come before the public each and every day, we still have an obligation to talk to the people in our communities and to speak to those people who have a difference of opinion. And there have been many times that I've sat here and perhaps voted against my own thoughts of how things could go because that's what my community wants. And I know that each and every one of these people take their time and their consideration, and I would like to just take this moment to thank you for your time.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm listening to all of the comments, listen to the remarks that we're making. In regards to ICE and the things that are happening, we're kind of missing the point. We talk about fiscal responsibility. We mentioned that $60 million federal suit was handed out against Suffolk County for detaining people on ICE warrants. ICE warrants are not judicial warrants. We're saying ICE is arresting criminals. If they're criminal warrants, then by all means, we expect them to be arrested. But we're not talking about criminal warrants. Let's be clear about that. We're talking about ICE detainers, which in several courts have proven to be violations of the constitutional Fourth Amendment, detaining someone beyond their lawful release time. My request was simply that we examine and we take a look at that. Not to make a political statement, but to simply understand what are we doing? What are we doing as a country? We have a man, Abrego Garcia, taken to another country mistakenly. We admit that. The easy thing to do is bring him back. But we don't. We don't. So we can't continue to look at an organization that's been weaponized as something as a part of our regular constitution. One of the things that we have in this country is we have the assumption that people in power will always have good intent. Our constitution is built on that. Unfortunately, we're not in that time now. This is not the time to be stuck to a partisan politic, but to look at us as a country and what we do. It appears that if we don't support this ICE thing, that we're against the sheriff. No. Gary Shute is a personal friend of mine. I met with him and Captain Stewart yesterday for them to explain to me their point. We support our sheriff department and the work that they're doing. But we also understand, in this situation, there's something that, first of all, could come back to bite us as a county and cost us millions of dollars. Grand Rapids, Michigan, $190,000 went to a person who was detained with an ICE warrant. There was no request to change any of the agreement, to look at it, to see if we're protecting ourselves and our citizens with the fiscal responsibility that we always talk about. So there's no need to get politically charged. It's to simple, simply understand we're dealing with people. We're dealing with people. If there are criminals that should not be here, by all means, we're not trying to protect those. What we're saying is, let's be fair. Let's be reasonable. If we have an organization weaponized to make decisions that's not based upon the right thing, we should not be supporting that, period. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. First and foremost, I want to thank the chair for his proper parliamentarian procedure tonight as we walked through tonight's meeting. Secondly, and again, very quickly, people are upset. People are afraid. People are scared of what this policy or this program, excuse me, could turn into. And all we were asking tonight is, let's do some homework to confirm that this isn't going to turn into a police chase, a big hunt, if you will. I remember even in my, and I'll share this very brief story, just to speak to the example of fear that people are now having, as even just yesterday. I was stopped and surrounded by people asking questions simply out of fear. And I remember, as a teenager, I was in college and minding my own business, driving down the road, going the speed limit, a citizen in this country, and was stopped and pulled over. Again, have not broken any laws, but was pulled over and the officer said, the officer said to me, "You don't look like you should be here." And so I had to prove to the officer that I'm just trying to get back to my dorm room. And so I'm flipping through my car, trying to find a paper with a school name on it. Thank God I remember that I had my ID with me. And I had, he would not let me go until I proved that I went to that school. That's the type of fear that people are afraid of. And so again, all we were asking tonight, let's do some homework. Let's confirm that this is what it says it is. And as we move forward, we, as a county board, we do our homework on every other matter. We seek legal opinion on almost everything that we do. Why not this time? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing done. Entertained a motion for closed session in accordance with MCL 15.2681-C. A collective bargaining agreement. Have it so moved in support? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Pulaski?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Snell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Will adjourn to the Administrator Controller's Boardroom.